I asked about what? What is that? How would you like to meet with the president of the Royal Marine Corps? How can we learn more about the Royal Marine Corps? The main reason why we have the Royal Marine Corps is because of the service of the Royal Marine Corps. The Royal Marine Corps is very much supported by the Royal Navy Command. The Royal Marine Corps is the leader of the Royal Navy Command. The Royal Marine Corps is the leader of the Royal Navy Command. And how can we learn more about the Royal Marine Corps?
Malakabayan ang pambansan awit ng Bibis.
Ayaw pa diyo, ayaw sa sila nga na. Halagang ang usos sa ibig kayo. Luwang pinila, diba na magiging? Saan ang kuwi, diba pa si siyo? Saan ang ata, kuwag sa simoyat, sa labi ko po ka. Ayaw ang ata, kuwag sa kahit saan, kahit na maay. Ang isa ka, ang kawat, buhay na, diba na kini? Ang ito, diba na karo, diba na, o ayaw niyo? Luwang na ka, diba na, diba na siyo? Diba na, diba na siyo? Ang inayaw na, diba na, diba na? Ang buhay na, diba na, diba na siyo?
Secretary General, balik ko mga 10 minutes, bata 'yung pinatendin. Para maihat na lang karayon ngayon, presidikya, muna kinahimutin ako. Good evening, the time of.
This speech will be used for 10-minute process. So that we can also give few minutes to our colleagues.
Any motion? 10 minutes?
10 minutes.
Okay, for this, yes, for 10 minutes. 10 minutes. Good evening, the time of. Is ini. Vice Mayor. Amelie. Adama, Vice Mayor, ringal yo. Ang alam mo, ita'no. Subaynamo. At may roplak, mura. No process. Depende sa. Kaysa natin, pero. Nakatutangnan, May. May. Oera si Ramos.
Sir, this is my friend, ano na, say mga ats na may.
Rest stop.
Emek, may emek?
Stapakan. Pire na, katalinasa.
Ah, yes, ringar. Ah, anak, anak eh. Forma maya rokitay.
Kawal. Kawal. Santriyon. Sire, kawal eh, kawal eh. Santriyon. Oh, yah, yah, eh.
Na tagan mo, sir.
Thank you. Do you have a question? We're gonna go.
Ano minimo?
Session is called back to the. The state of the night of courage, the presence of normal mall, therapy and ramos. I will ask now for. Presence of acting mayor, no action, I want to serve. Session. Ah, vale. Is there a pass, sir? Is there a pass? La man dere, adaption of the qua, adaption of. Yes, ko, magis ko. Hello, sir, to. Upload the business for today. Uda no, may, 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 may. So. Any motion to adapt or approve the business for the day?
I know, Mr.
There's a motion. Done. Upload, action, is this for today? No reaction? Motion is approved? Oh, we will go to the discussion.
We have some visitors? There's no. I didn't see, but I noticed that he is a presence of our mall.
Ah, yes. All these people, officers, civilians. With. Account. Ah, request. For. Okay. Gracias. Then. Then.
Tawagin na lang. Tawagin na lang.
Then, we'll allow those who request. So. You are the highest, you know what are found? So. Who will, the first question to.
Ah, the morning, the morning and exciting officer and the members of the normal body. We are here because we receive a notice or a notification from the secretary. That we have to arise this normal body for insisting on condition of our illegal fishing. Uh, activities that are now becoming rampant during this day. Uh, since the beginning. And, uh, so, for the, for the. Specific, uh, information. Uh, I am here with the. The judiciary officers of our office, Mr. Darwin Mingho. To present a seventeen slide, the presentation about illegal fishing operations. Pungyan.
Okay.
Good morning to all the side members, sir. And example, ang mga SP numbers. So, uh, this is the, uh. We prepared the presentation about the illegal fishing operations in itil. Now for this year, twenty twenty one. So, to begin with. Uh, sorry. So. So, we'll have to some background no sa. Atong, uh, our municipal waters. So, IPIL has approximately twenty thousand hectares of municipal water area. So, we have a pinanili ang ato ang mahawan, makatuw, blue one island, marine collective area. So, we have a shoreline of thirty three kilometers, mangrove area of orange, two one hectares. Fish plant, uh, eight hundred sixty four point one hectares, seaweed area of one thousand five hundred. And total number of fisher pods, now four thousand two hundred. So, mukulang production, not for twenty twenty. Tatong bangos, we have seven hundred twenty five point eight four tons. Uh, fish from capture fishing, one thousand nine hundred thirty four tons. Uh, dry seaweed, nine hundred thirty seven tons, mangrove crop, seventy nine point forty four tons. The local or black tiger shrimp, one hundred twenty point eight seven thousand. Other shrimps such as, other locally known flower, like the prissy box shrimp, one ton shrimps. And atay, eight hundred thirty nine point. So, mukulang kita sa atong update no. So, based among mga reliable resources, money, mga negative seeds ka'rong na mga illegal fishers in saipil. So, nakatagaw, nakatagaw na sa hulbot-hulbot sa troll. So, modify dance time or ang hulbot-hulbot. Uh, morning ang mga names, no? Una una, si Mr. Olivo, nasay a total of seven units. Uh, coloni any, ang commercial about three dozen. Ang mga, nasay mga gatway pod, billo three dozen sa patto tubo, so occasionally makes a barangay blue one. Next, kay si Raul Dudas with one unit hulbot-hulbot. Uh, next is Mr. Bebolyos, who is a member of Philippine Armed Army. So, wala kayo muna, buha ang exact name, pero mani siyang. But. Part of the one of that, so. With one unit, Mr. Ronnie Fernandez. Uh, one unit called si Mr. Jaime Bernos, with two units. Esmeralda Bernos, one, Bobong Bernos, one, Tabid Olivo, one, and Marvin Joe Maribelas, one. So. Continue, continue your. Yan. Si Randy Umitin with one, number of units, one. Uh, Ruben Loyloy, Loyloy, with two commercial. Commercial type nga hulbot-hulbot. Then, solo kagatmain, no, develop three dozen. Si Ian Panes with one unit. Uh, Mr. Bowisan with one unit. Mr. Alam, who is a private, personal, isa ka unit. Uh, Mr. Eh, alias Kilong. So, one unit, one unit. Si Dudu Malinaw and Daniel Bowisan, nasay isa ka unit. And Mr. Dean, na isay isa ka unit, na, lakun siya, a commercial, commercial type design. So, anatay a total of twenty eight hulbot-hulbot sa IPIL sa pagkakaroon na nagoperin. Wala pa, wala pa, hindi naranong mga ginahimok ah. So, I, the fish folks were still fabricating hulbot-hulbot sa pagkakaroon. So, next, atong Bibito, so sa IPIL, ang barangay na non, Bibito isang mangtiroan. So, ang, dami ng study, mukulang ang record sa umong, sa last year, so president, president, president siya. So, una una, sinulito sa rin yo, nasay isa ka unit. Uh, Remia Gallego Duha, siya, Muta Karin, with one. Angelika Boris, one unit. Mr. Romeo Tomono with seven units. Uh, Abrahi Muta, Muta Karin with one, Abra Tamayo, one. Uh, Esmeralda Tong, one unit, Padol Fajino, one unit. Freddy Orcales, one unit. Uh, Mr. Nicky Badernal, three units, Justin Boris with four, Nining Baluca, two units. Uh, Salida, two units, Bibito, Benamir, Benamir is one. So, Taser Cosmi, one, Torena, one. Approximately, there are thirty eight Bibitos na nagoperin, no? Uh, pero based among twenty twenty records, so na'yo mga wanganina, wala na, hindi down na. Oh, so, na'yo, na'yo, na'yo. So, una unang names of apprehended illegal fishing fisher pods, uh, from January to December six. Twenty, uh, this year, twenty twenty one. So, una una, uh, for the month of January, na kano'ko, no, ka illegal fishing na nagoperin ni. Ah, nagipanagihan ni Mr. Pfizer Esmorabi. So, nasay, uh, penalty ng ten thousand. So, nakasetang say five thousand sa NTO, so nakasay, perang ngayon five thousand. Then, si, uh, next, kay si Mr. Uh, uh, Arsonino Morabi. So, nasay penalty ng ten thousand. Uh, Bibito niya, ang, ang tatakpan sa iyan, nagoperin sa municipal waters, nasay penalty ng ten thousand. Parang iyan, uh, nasetang sa NTO, it's only five thousand, so nakasay million balance of five thousand. Next, for the master driving, Mr. Abdul Manan Abdao. Nasay one unit unit for a local unit as Pamo. So, nasay penalty ng ten thousand pesos, nasetang na siya. So, next, uh, for the month, for the month of March, uh, si Mr. Tatum Anduhon. No, uh, one minute Bibito, naglaman tiroan siya. So, nasay penalty ng seven thousand plus compensation of gear, okay, uh, troll gear. Uh, this includes the, uh, atong net and the water board or board, yeah. Next, uh, for the month of IPIL. Uh, namin natakpan tulung, si, uh, Saleh Betamore. With, uh, nasay penalty ng ten thousand pesos plus compensation of troll, troll gear, no? So, yung natetang sa iyang task, penalty only five thousand, tapos say million balance na kinaangis etang na five thousand pesos. Next is si Mr. Omar Mangis, siyang owner, at same time operator. No, nakakwan siya, ang, one unit Bibito, na nagoperin sa dito sa municipal waters of IPIL. Nasay penalty ng ten thousand plus compensation of gear, nagyakwan. Uh, same, uh, setang niyang five thousand, pero ang five thousand, uh, wala pa yun yang nasetang na, uh, tutugan. Next, si Esmeralda Bernos. Uh, nahulog na siyang illegal fishing, kaya wala siyang vote registration and registration. So, ang mga decision sa mag, wala na siyang penalize, di, di pa comply na siya sa mga judiciary registration. So, next, si Mr. Ariadro Tega, uh, one unit, ginanet fishing. Uh, wala kayo siya, wala pa niya siya, one, uh, wala siyang vote registration and registration. Deyon, wala pa niya siya nagka-comply dito sa fish landing, dito sa渔场渔场 center. So, wala siya nagka. So, nasay, na matamay natin, na ten thousand, which is a setang na. Next, is the Mr. James Cibelo, na, tatakpan siya ang, uh, Danish sign or hulbot-hulbot. Hagon September twenty one, September twenty twenty one, nasay, uh, cash penalty ng twenty thousand pesos. Uh, upish, ten thousand lang iyan nasetang, oh, tapos say ten thousand, silang pesos, nito. Next, uh, still for the month of September, nasay, Redanty Madobina. So, nagoperin siya of, uh, modify nine nine, or hulso-hulbot, nag-od, nag-od, okay, pinangyakon. Uh, na penalize siya of twenty thousand pesos. Uh, same kay Mr. Cibelo, ten thousand lang iyan nasetang, or ang ten thousand pesos kay, uh, Grang David iyan nasetang. So, next, is Mr. Helby Bulhanoy, same hulbot-hulbot. Natakpan siya tungkol February twenty twenty one. So, nasay penalty ng ten thousand pesos plus compensation of one roll square length, or ang ginatawag ko, abo. Next is Mr. Jose Olivo, natakpan siya hulbot-hulbot. No, uh, nasay cash penalty ng twenty thousand pesos plus compensation of one roll square length, or same ago. Uh. Na, na, sa parapasya payment siya of only ten thousand pesos, and nasay giving, nasetang sa NTO ng ten thousand pesos. Next, si Mr. Romeo Tomono, uh, one minute Bibito. Actually, isa, isa ka, isa ka, uh, silver patrol ano, doon, yung mga nagtakpan niya, takpan. So, same time na niya siya na takpan, yeah, yugo na kayo, um, all the same or the same. So, iyang mga, tagsan, ay, ika daw pa niya, di, penalty siya of five thousand pesos plus compensation of troll gear. Ang pinanito iyan, ngayon, iyan ago. So, sa, next is Mr. Marvin Joe Maribelas, natakpan siya ang hulbot-hulbo. So, uh. Pero, uh, pero, last, last month lang niya, November twenty twenty one, na penalize siya of twenty thousand pesos plus compensation of Bikisay. So, nasay partial payment ng ten thousand pesos, okay, million balance ng ten thousand pesos. Last thing, muni pinakarado lastong na takpan, si Mr. Ian Panes. Has still to hulbot, nagyakon iyan, after she's getting operating. No, so. Nasay cash penalty ng fifteen thousand pesos plus compensation of scale length, or abo. So, una lang samali na to. So, a total of sixteen illegal fishing boats were apprehended from January to December, December nine, twenty twenty one. The following fisher pods were apprehended and penalized. Fifteen owners of illegal fishing boats, sixteen operators, and twenty boat crew. So, total cash penalty paid at NTO, ang kapital siya of one hundred twenty three thousand five hundred pesos. So, anapung may mga problema nag-incounter, na na-incounter sa mga pag-implement sa mga, sa tuwang, ah, ordinance. So, una una, is lack of gasoline. So, pagkataron, uh, allocation na ng mga, mga location, only twenty meters per week. No, uh, which is, gamay na niya kung buo, naunaan kayo, halos sa isa ka. Sa isa ka, with, with, ten top, uh, silver patrol operation for, uh, two to five operations, yeah. Atakopay na, uh, gasoline, ang, ang kapital or karengon sa gasoline na ma consume. Next is no police or army escort. Uh, sa pagkataron, wala dun may escort nga, uh, authorized sa guray. Na mga police or armed personnel, gawas ng sa mga blue guard. Nagsumua sa sa mga, kuy-kuy, sa pagkataron, magconduct yung silver patrol operator. Next, no fire arms for the bandit agat. Next, almost, uh, deleted patrol boats. So, naanggapun sa patrol boats, pero, uh, muban, is, kailangan na siya of frequent repairs. No, so, dalit na siya, bignon na ang ato ang mga, what? Ang ato ang mga patrol boats. Ang zoom. Si Mr. Ang zoom, nag forty minutes.
Kaya, yes.
Ang pala, sir, muna na lang, last. Angay na lang, last, last four slides. Next, uh, next problem naman na nag-incounters. Ang sama sa umong yung mga nilina, isa lang ang mga blue guard, na naka-assigned para sa mga bandit agat. Then, ako, personal, ako lang ang mga bandit agat na magconduct of untag, of tabiina, as silver patrol operation. Wala na atay mga incentives, pero di sila, sagwa di sila straight sa kaburan maka duty since. Ang atong incentive ng bandit agat is. Orarium lang, fifteen days ng ilahang dinya. Then, fourteen bandit agat, naatay fourteen ka bandit agat, but two are assigned at NTO. And one at the maritime police as both operator. So, mouse action, tumoni ang mga, ang mga laking namogimo, no? So, we can, uh, can a principal patron, two to five times a week. Facilitated a letter to Chief Jerry Alfonso for the mayor to request policemen to be assigned as FLAS for dated August sixth, twenty twenty one. Uh, we facilitated also another letter to MPS, Chief Karunan, for the mayor to request policemen dated October fourth, twenty twenty one. So, pati ang ato ang MFC, or ato ang Municipal Fisheries and Fish Management Council, naginom over solution. Uh, para mag-request to, uh, to increase the gasoline allocation. So, twice this year, naginom sa resolution atong July sixth, twenty twenty, and November eighth, twenty twenty one. Uh, next, uh, mouse request for additional gasoline allocation to send way to twenty twenty one. Pati ang officine about sa mall nagrequest for na i-increase ang gasoline allocation para sa silver patrol operation at sa bandit agat. Then, uh, we also facilitate a letter, a letter addressed to the detachment commander of Delta Company and the fourth fourth ID. Uh, Philippine Army at Magdo updated October twenty sixth, twenty twenty one. So, mouse recommendation, so wala tayong mga karcomendation, una una, ka-increase gasoline allocation. Next is detail policeman, then hire additional personnel or observe them as G O. No, next is follow-up delivery of new patrol boat, and. Last week, uh, we are requesting the Sangguneang Bay to possibility of quality for meeting with identified illegal fishing operators to handle site and. Uh, refresh it or organize. So, katablang din sa.
So, tawag kayo, dunay mga identified ng mga illegal fishers. Sa inyo ang, aprehend with legal. Uh, fishers. Or dunay, identified na wala natin wala ko. O sa sistema na, kung, kung hulbot-hulbot. Kung diya sa, sa fifty kilometer, fifty kilometer regions, kusa sa may legal. Iyan na na, mukhir sila.
Ang hulbot-hulbot. Dunin, hulbot-hulbot, managat pa siya or hindi managat, basta identify siya at hulbot-hulbot, pati ang siya, hulbot-hulbot. Pwede na gitsa na. Pero kami, uh, amo na ng ilog, gamang nga, aktwal na lang yun nga, aktwal na lang yun, naasas bagat. Oh, amo siya na, kung ganasas bagat.
So, is there the possibility na, maginom ng ordinance na, bawal ang hulbot-hulbot, illegal fishing, hulbo sa tuwang, buwanan?
Na lang tara, tara na sa maas, bawal mo dumbo. Pero, mas, 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 dumbo, hindi dumbo niya, wala kayo support, so dinis na hulbot naon, pero wala kayo support. Ang ilang isda, kung haas may fish career, di illegal man ang fish career, eh, service lang siya.
Dapat raka sila, eh, na.
Na, naasas mitaga.
Naatol sila.
Basta, basta kay, humungas na to, nagtagal na mga illegal gear, karenang hulbot, naghiyon, man. Na, pwede nila sa mga apprehend, basta di, wala, wala na.
Lardo, Lardo, I'd like to verify the statement of the law. Na tayong opinan sa anak na, kadang. Illegal position of illegal fisher, the subject of the special, is there an ordinance?
Oo, pero inyo ang di, one, inyo ang di repay, dito sa maas, wala na.
Oo, wala.
Pero, sa.
Saon man inyo pagdakot, kung may ordinance, na di repay, mali ay.
Di, wala, ang kato, kaito ano to siya, kaito na repay, lahi to siyang statement.
What are you?
Karon is specifically for hulbot, kagit sa.
O sa inyo, ina-apply ka'rong, sa inyo, apprehension ang.
Ang bago, maas.
Maas, oh, wala kayo na, eh, ordinance sa side from maas.
Wala na, wala.
Kay, uh.
Ang maas sa maas.
So, nasidet na ba to, man?
Oo, ang maas sa maas, bawal silang dumbo. Ang maas sa maas. Bawal po silang. Oo, bawal silang dumbo ngang kontak.
Naas sa maas, na, bawal silang dumbo?
Oo, oo. Bawal managat, bawal po silang dumbo.
Wala na, ang, ang, sa maas, eh.
Sir, ako, additional agent, sir. Atong mga.
Apo sa maas?
Palba, gulapisme, brasi kume, sinaita po.
Ano man, na maya, ano man, wala, naas na, pumisurin, no, aktwalit?
Daw, sinaita po sila, balik, sila balik.
Okay. Bawal.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven.
Wala man sa maas, wala'y, siya, siya, sa maas.
Dapat, yan yan ngayon, takpan na nilang ngayon, sa inas kayan, iyon pa na ito.
O, iyon pa na mo, unless, kung mas simple na ang.
Disisyon. Mas simple yan, ilang payment, naliris mo niya?
Oo.
Nilis siguro?
Kung mas simple yan, ilang, obligasyon kailangan pa yun.
Balik po sila, talaga, talaga?
Oo, balik.
Walang di ano, yun po po sila balik, eh.
Oo, managat.
Compiscation dito sa ilang years, ang ilang, sa yan.
Maas na po na ngayon. Muntahin mo siya, baguhy. Kasi, marasantay.
What does the maas, sir, sir, with the, the tradition of, uh, what does the maas, uh, penalty say?
Nagpo kayo, binaldi sa maas, yun, tani.
Including a compiscation?
Including a compiscation. Pero, wala buo. Gear, lang, gear. Okay, dunay may recommendation, sir, okay, na'to, grabe, grabe, may recommendation, dina. Haga, we are testing the USB, the computer call, the leadership of ordinance, are may bawal mo to, ang sign po, sa mga.
So, uh, and what is your recommendation about that, to spread the law, that the criminal is existing, uh, in a wide sign?
O, ginaw, kla, amo na din na sa, ngayon, muna na, sa implement mo, wala dito, di bibilang, di kayo, kayang. Memro sa maas board, namay naging sa decision, pero, din na kami naging sa decision.
So, wala, sir, wala kang mga recommendation, sir, sir, about what might, what must we do? Uh, for this, uh, this, uh, problem, eh, gumugunaan ya, sa, uh, at the cultural office. At least, we take one, one recommendation that we probably can adopt, uh, we probably adopt the.
Sir, karon na diya, sir, sa maus recommendation, o na setan na.
I'm talking about the ordinance, though, because you're explaining about the visiting the ordinance. What is the, uh, the, the proposal, uh, and to, uh, to review the ordinance and make, uh, kailangan nga, eh, rakan na to eh. Sa nakakanan, when I'm talking about the penalty or recommendation, may send na to, at one, na play.
Sometime in September or October. Ang ano nagkikita ngayon lima rekapo ang patroliya. Ilang di paunlad tong dakbo na illegal fishing. Na sa sulod na to, na sulod na. At muna isusuko kapo pro. Sir, ano talaw na niyo pati? Pong pilito ba? Tomoy commercial fishing license na bumihi niyo hatang, may mga mga permi, may mga resitya. Pero nga, o yung isa kanito kontalang, talagang talaw na dito. Kung rawy mo dapo kamu, upat ramo kapo, gipara ba ika niyo ba yung ano kasi ito? Siya 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 ay nung karmas, mula yung police kuyo. Di ka may mahal do'sa unan mo? Sa bete nun ang buta. Di likin mo kuyo? Oo, ganap ba? Kung naon sila, dito pa olingo, putos na matay mo na. Oo, di sinah. Ito na saang status, tamong mura desakripisyo, love, ilang yun, parang sa lipin. So, wala nga, no police, school, number two sa problema.
Okay, no, yeah, divide na yun nga, taga-kapang, katong daghan, ngayong ah dapat pala ko commercial ah book naggamit, may di na yung yung ibig.
Wala, ito, taga-kapang, nagananga, nagkalitara to.
Wala.
Wala, pumunta na sa, di ba, per fishing mo, listo sa inyo? Di ba yung mga kristo na nagbo?
Hindi, hindi.
Number four.
Putaro sa inyo sipi.
Para may divide siya nga, alop siya buwas. Di ba yung mga kristo, oray. Tay, tay, tay. Matig na sa, tapi ka na may school, lakpor na yun. May man, may kristo siya. Eh, kayo tuti mo, kaswang 3415. Talaga yung meritang juristiko, bigalim hatag, armen, nga yung sagatko na yun, hatag. Oh, hawak rin police.
Sine, pagkamukha ito, tawag po, mayayak po kay dili, amukikwan, stand by.
Buwan na sa.
May sa wagat, habi po dili, may set in a recommendation, eh, mamayro bi, dahil kayo sila, alangan ng inyo.
Oh, meritang sa meritang pulis, kada yung kasulina sir. Sir, ulam mitao sir.
Ah, ganse ba, sir, kasulina, okay.
Di lang meritang pulis, kung mga yun, may ayat, may assistan sa meritang pulis, sir. Sir, mga yun, sir, kasulina daan.
Pero si kusyun ba, tumiyong kana, bupat ramo. Kada, ibang mukwad sa meritang pulis. Ang basisyo, seryo mapayos.
Mukha niya, ulam ka ng meritang pulis, sir, malayo sa kasulina. Wala na diya amilitas, kung magmit ka pa sa kasulina.
Sir, na provide sa fishery's law, na one, yung penalty. Sa ah fishery's law, na diniya tulinas, katong fishery's angawa. Na na shoot down the law, sir, na provide the penalty.
Ay, yung kung tama't tausan. Tama't tausan, kataas. Sa nasa law na siya, lahat sa kaya di ba yung mga tawagan sa lokal? Tama't tausan, matahol po. Ah, ano ang problema? Ah, ah, at what, I don't know. Katalamang
I said, but, may hatan na, may hatan na, with the gap, masulat, we must not serious. I have been fighting illegal fishing for almost twenty-six years. Di likin masulat yapon. I did not serious, sa atong pag-imbita sa atong balon. Do na pa yung mga pinili. Do na pa yung mga. Because I told Ramon Ramos, I amend, ni Maas, law. To amend, to solve this situation, pay. Ang ilan yung law na penalty, sir, about fifty thousand, pero paghangiwan yo, din tausadala. Five thousand na lang, we are not serious. So, I said, na asa Maas law. Do na yung penalty plus confiscation of all illegal fishing years, they are not doing it. Wala sila, may confiscate, lahat yun.
Kapo, pasukan sir, sir. Ang, ang decision sa, decision sa, na penalty, sir, ang board. Ang, may pro sa board, madalang pugamo, may, may insta yun pro sila.
Ang insta.
Pero, laman nga nito, ako para, to di na lang ato ang itong pag-itsis.
Oh, man.
Ano ba ro? Pero, pero, para, mga time na niya, ito, sa talaga, na binagot pa dyan, eh, open race na.
Yung posiblismo, ah, police, may, may, pamugas, oh, sir, oh, yun nga.
Ay, sir, sir.
Na, manu chi, yung una, una, kami, apoyan, di, officer. City nation, pamugas, pamugas, sir, oh, kayo sila. How can we prevent, help prevent, protect our resources, sihital ka, kaloy, kaloy, kaloy.
So, di lang ano kaloy, sir, ano yung, pala mo sa board, lo, lo, ito, yung
I told you many times, what is ni Maas implemented? Kamu man, may gajas, atsas, kamu na may gawot, bo, di, kamu sahoy di Maas law.
Lu, ang board, ang board, diya, ano sir, ang board, kahimber lang ko sa board.
By the member of the board, you are the, you are supposed to be the
What, sir, ang, atriano ng mga, supas service, bilib mo na sa doorit. Yung ano, yun, la pista, napalaga, kaso, may, may, may nista talaga, kayo.
Right, tagal lang kaloy.
So, we would like you once, to, to confiscate the fishing yards, at the, if it can be stay at? Record lang, kaya, muna, nakorger, aman, 315 na lang. Pero, order yun na siya, sa atong balon.
May multa ka, sir. Yes, sir. Sine, ako, the radio ko sa one, sa organization, sa, na, sir, po. Ang balansa, una na to, tino si Benoko. Talang, ako, sa, tanan, yung sa nagyon, butanan ka rin, role, ah, jan, 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 tanan, tanan mga regal. At then, maganay ka ng mga tangga. So, yapon tanpa naon, ma resolve yapon, pero, ang ato alam, wait to say, sir. Ah, la, yung nagyon, yung, ah, tanan mga illegal fisher. Taga diri, sakto, taga diri. So, besan, sa ono, pagdakop na, dali kapadonggo. Kay, taga diri man, di dongo, kandun na, dili dakon. So, ato alam, ako, sakto ko kay, kay, just, ako, may strike, tawag mo na sila. Kay, what, yung kabalo sila, besan, dikaman, talat, kore, takto, po, na, sa, sa, dagat. Kay, kabalo na sila, nga ilan, tabo, legal, ako, na, hanggang na. Kedy, sa ono to, no, sir, sa ono to, pan, pan implementation, sa atong balon. Okay, sa report, ah, five, five zero, fifteen, sila, dito, then, sere, asa, kuwa, sa tino si Benoko, seven, sila, dito, karam, fifteen, nagyon. So, despite five zero, tanan, na, atong, yung, role, tanan, robot, robot, ini, ganun na. So, kung atong, buktan, sila, dyan. Sila, so, tanan, ben, dito, no?
Ben, eh, ang board, eh, 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 eh. Eh, eh, tapo, pa, fifteen, la.
Mga time na, tapo, to.
Ah, yun, fisherman, ni mo, bajar, fisherman, ni mo, four hundred, ah, four thousand plus.
Four yun, oh, thousand plus.
Four thousand plus. So, dakbo, kayo, one ba, ang magmura, ha, kung, ah, yun, ah, sa, ah, 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 so, dapat, na, sa, yung, ganay na, one ba. Ah, pagpasabot, kayo, na, kay, kung, dili, dyan, ah, sila, yapon. Dili, na, na, wala, wala, kanan dakbo, dakbo, yun, ayun, ang buhay, ay, kung, magtiнач, ah, petani mo, ganan, ben, dili. Ah, na, fifteen thousand, hindi, ma, ka, po, tanan, eh, na, yon, ng bangka, eh, yun, na, dikagahan, atong, pa, di sini.
Wala, wala, sa bangka, wala, sa bangka, sa bangka.
Okay, kedy, kung, kung, mo, boleh, 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 yun, dili sakto, dili, taga diri, sakto. Oh, naku, ako, pabok, kayo, tawag mo, sa, ayun, atong, na, kaya, na. Actually, actually, honorable.
Pilang, sir, lagi, pertama, dito?
Honorable board. I have been fighting illegal fishing for twenty-six years. I have faced all illegal fishers, many times, education, education, ten, nine, nine, of the effect of illegal fishing. Di, sila, ah, then, ah, sa ilang, ah, advantages, we gave them machine, ah, engine, we give them buko. After one or two months, balik sa illegal, what is the result? Hindi, may mabuhay, ano, legal, sir, ako, maalis, managa.
Pero, pa, yun, sa, balang, sir, sa, sa, Manila, dito, wala, wala, yun, yun.
Because, the, ah, yun, malaw, ang pinaka, dangkan, bully, ah, fisher, pa, magitak, abot, bully, sakto, pero, kano, wala, man. Muna, ah, ato alam, sa ono, to, takto, implementa, takto, balon.
Ah, sir, sir. So, tagal lang yung police, tagal yung police, ano yun, yun, wala. Gawa, gawa, balay.
Wala, balay, balay, mas.
Napa, mo, sila, kaw, matatag, tayo.
Eh, tawag mo, na, sir.
Napa, mo, patatag, sila.
Many times, already, many times, this same reason, sa inyo, amyo. Abot, lang, yung, yun, time, sabunta. So, I told Ramon Ramos, ah, adong, repio ng Maas, or dinans. We cannot implement what is there, ni Maas, amend it. Fifty thousand, sixty thousand penalty, unya, paghangiwan na, yung, abot, five thousand, abot, ten thousand? Oh, ano man, pumupahan yo? Eh, malukoy, oh, so, di, di, naghi, di, di, naghi, takay, sa, eh, yun. And sila implemento, sila, friend, sila, sa, nan, sila, may, malukoy, sila, may, man, dyan, sa, pinag, na. I told, honorable, ah, pa, what is, ni Maas, penalty plus confiscation of all illegal fishing years. Wala, may, na, yun, kumanta. Kaloy, yun, yun, how can you?
Ang board, board, may malukoy, board.
You are part of the board, and you are the head of the office?
Oh, yes.
Oh, you're supposed to be the vice.
Vice, sir, may.
Ah?
At all time, I can convince the board. Pako, pakas, the board. So, kung, muna, yung, ang gusto, nagyun.
Ano, yung, mga, kamu, yung gusto? You recommended to us, both you and Benon, recommended for si Maas, law. Ah, kamu, nagatino seminar, sa, sa, Pila Cup, months. Ah, Pila Cup, bulan, yung, atin, almost, one year, balik, balik, katanan, then, yung, formulated, hello. You presented it to some, yung, bayan, for, for, yapon. Then, so, ano, yon?
Mukha ni sir, ah, tawag, matatag, sa, sa, pagdecision, yung, ah, may pro sa board.
Wala, di, wala, di, tawag, tawag, tawag.
Sige, wala, yung, bulos, ang bulos, di yun.
Pero, yam, police, man, ang board.
Yam, police, man, wala, wala, sangtaw, maging, yung, mga, yung, decision, di, di, oh.
Ngano man, ngano, yam, 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 board. Ah, because, yun, na, performing, dyan.
Oh, four times, four times.
Twenty-six years, you're paying back no? And I request the call to Mr. You can make a charge, sir.
This is a question, Markina.
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 I'm in charge. I don't know who you're picking, and it's your personal decision, that could tell your the bank one, or not.
The government, the government, sir, I'm on the bank.
I'm sorry, sir, I'm sorry, sir, I'm so bored, I'm gonna decide now. I'm gonna pick that one, okay, sir?
Yeah, but only, I will tell you frankly, Karol. Well, I'm not so keen, I have a request. I'm a fool, I'm a Muslim. That's what I'm doing, I'm a fool. Well, I'm not interested in that. I want more, I only have my business, I'm not looking at those sources of cash. Sidula, I just got a capital, you know? Like, if I'm not, I'm not going to know, but I'm a quokka. If I have to pay, I'm going to use it. I don't have to pay, I'm going to use it. She do, she do borrow it from the bank. Ah, you'll leave your own business, you're not going to buy it.
Yes, sir.
Oh.
I'm going to go down there.
You'll let me pick it? Oh.
Sir, what? What are you confessing, sir? I'm not, this is what I'm saying, I'm not taking that. I'm not taking that from the interests of the, the rich growers, and the money, the people. I'm not taking it.
I don't care about that, Mr. Apo.
I'm not taking that, sir, I'm not, I'm not going to take that from the bank, sir, that's what I'm doing. I'm not going to take that from the bank, now, sir, I'm not multiple, I'm not going to pay you.
But, you're not caring, man, you're like, I'm not complying, I'll leave that. Please, I don't know, sir. I'm not, I'm not leaving, man, you're, I'm not leaving your business, you I don't care, I don't care.
Well, yes, of course, I'm not taking that, sir. But, they say, they pay you, they don't give you, they don't give you, well, that's why I'm not taking that.
About that, I made a recommendation to you is to refer that to the local finance committee. Before we take action on that, we need, we need an endorsement from the local finance committee. Because that is from G O for regular. So, according to Mr. Apo, this was referring to the local finance committee. I, I said to him, "For me, I'm a senior fire member. I do not accept verbal action." I need an endorsement from the local finance committee. We will not depend on, on verbal information that the internal minister Apo or local finance committee. We need confirmation from the local finance committee, okay, basa nganak?
So, may request, Mr. Apo, prepare communication address to the local finance committee.
Well, that depends upon your call. If you want to change your recommendation.
I am, I am also with the, okay, no, there were, but the video. What is our action should be black and white should be written.
I do not accept verbal information. If we investigate Mr. Apo, what can we say? Okay na na, okay na na, sir. Okay na na, local finance committee. We need confirmation from the local finance committee.
A creation of position.
Thank you. So, next we take report, normal hours. I have, I have, pero, I'd like to visit, eh, the,
Local airport.
Airport.
To take some tools.
Shoot.
So, let me know.
Security, because I'll say it here.
So, let me know.
So, I'll visit that. What to para bang senior citizen, yeah? Mariter.
We have to, we have to.
Don't be careful. So, one, two, three, four. Five, six, seven, eight.
Second meeting, sir.
The second meeting.
Second, where, where that, so, please, where, where, sir?
Second meeting, oh, I don't know, what's the number?
Second meeting, sir.
Second meeting, pa. Four second meeting, that's correct.
You want to, you want to report to my company?
Oo, four second meeting.
Oo.
Now, if you want to, you can.
Es que, so, na ni.
Uh, Mr. Chair, before we proceed, acknowledge the presence of our chief of police, uh, Karol.
Okay.
So, this is the place. So, I think, Mr. Chair, this, it is, uh, because of the.
Yeah, me.
So, my chief. Atong mga sinis, sinis, but, uh, what I know, what I know, sa tao.
So, attention at the same time, that, since, of course, the, the presentation. The, 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 what is, namatayan, and, and, then, 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 the, the, the emergency. So, bago po la, uh, sir, ma, uh, uh, hindi ako sa support of the, the, yes. Uh, yung performance of my personal service, sir, sure. The performance, the personality, the association. And then, the latest. It's difficult to add the, uh... The, uh, the other month. From July to November. Is number one for today. Like, some places time on number two for the month of. Of course, which is the, like, effect because of the, uh, the body cam. So, we're going to take a look at the past, because. In a, uh... The accomplishment, they are in the, uh, the condition, they are, uh, the accomplishment, we're going to have. So, five years, we're going to drugs. So, the, uh, the drugs, because, uh, always highest, uh, once. Always the product, I mean, the product. So, number one, uh, July, August, uh, July, September, October, November, sir. So, it is different from the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the. The regard, uh. There, some, uh, shooting incident that will happen, uh, most of them is personal drugs. So, um, the latest, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh... So, may, I'm going to, uh, uh, join. It's related to the, uh, the triangle.
So, in that, three months.
Yes, sir.